Good evening and welcome to the Special Planning Commission meeting of December 13th. This is a study session to review zoning and subdivision materials and codes. Introduce yourself.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Mark Zitzau, urban planner with Johnson and Associates. With me tonight is Kelly Driscoll, who's also an urban planner in our office. Luckily, there was no Planning Commission meeting following this, so we have all night to go through this and answer any questions you have.
Yeah.
We love zoning codes, so we'll be here as long as you need us. But I don't think it'll take that long. I'll run through this. If you have questions, interrupt me, let me know. But we're going to try and leave ample time at the end to answer any questions you all may have. There we go. So just a quick background, since we last saw you in July, we have continued to do our outreach and engagement with city council, Board of Adjustment. We hosted an Engineers and Developers Open House on October 27th and put out an online survey and sent it to folks that frequently submit applications in Yukon. I'll go over those results in a second. We also hosted another meeting with sign professionals. They are typically a very active group and frequent users of the code, so we hosted an open house with them as well and sent out a survey. Here. There we go. So here are some of the items that we found and what we discussed. With the engineers and developers, I think the biggest complaint to this point that they've had is just the platting process in terms of filing a plat and the 65-day timeline, along with the fact that they feel they have to bond the improvements and make them, which essentially is paying for those improvements twice. That's a bit unique for Yukon, so that's something we've continued to talk with staff about. They felt that the duplex lot minimums were too large, that we needed to make townhomes and mixed use possible in the code. They brought up the fact that not everybody wants a yard and we need to allow for different housing types. They talked about curb cuts and circle drives, so that, I know you all see a lot of circle drive applications, that if a set of standards was to be established, it may be something staff could administer. The plan easement vacation process should be made clear and easier. Reimbursement for extensions for water and sewer if it serves a larger area. And then a submittal schedule. So when a developer submits an application, they have a rough idea of when Planning Commission and City Council will be. The sign professionals, they actually felt that the sign process and getting an application was clear, concise, and fairly straightforward. They did not have much of any concerns or issues. They were hopeful that the signed code remained relatively unchanged. The one thing that they did ask for us to look at was that the conditional use permit having to be renewed every year could be potentially a longer period of time. Yes, sir?
On item number three, duplex lot minimums are too big. Is there data on that? Did they provide a citation, or was that just their feeling that...?
I think that was their feeling based on the clients that they represent. So what we're doing in looking at the code is looking at other municipalities to see what size their duplex lot requirements are.
Okay. Yeah, I would be interested in other municipalities that actually enforce zoning and codes. There's a lot of municipalities I don't think we need to be concerned with. And, you know, so I think, you know, those that are known to have a strict reading of their zoning, that's who I would be interested in there. I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but that's... There's... Data is good as long as the data source is worth looking at, so.
Right.
And on... Not everybody wants a yard. I don't think they have a single citation for that or any data on that. Are there people who don't want a yard? Yes, but not everyone wants a yard. I've yet to meet the person that says, "I want no place for my kids to play." So are there certain, you know, new families that that's their feeling? Yes, but I think that's a pretty generalized statement.
Right, and that's what we were asking for at this point from them. In no way is anything that we are proposing here would mean that it automatically becomes legal in Yukon. What it means is that within the zoning code, there's potentially an allowance for it. So when someone drafts a PUD, there is an appropriate base zoning for that special type of project.
Right. If we don't give you our feelings tonight, you're never going to get them.
Exactly.
So I think it's important for us, everyone here, to chime in on this. Okay, thank you.
Yes. Any other questions on this slide? So one of the other things we've looked at were fees for applications, and one of the recommendations we've made is that Yukon adjusts their fees to be more in line with neighboring communities. The fees on some items were much lower than what Yukon charges, and that's more of just an administrative piece of this process, but we just want to make sure that the fees being collected are close to covering staff time, similar to other cities in the metro. And so we're going to walk through the...
Question on that. So, I mean, as we think about this, right, that's revenue to the city, right, for the fees and the work that comes in with that, right? And it's got to have an offset of cost, right?
Right.
So I guess I would want to know what our true cost is, and are we setting fees based on what we need to recover as a community versus just what other cities charge? I don't particularly care what other cities charge. I'm much more concerned with what our raw costs are, and are we covering that with the fee base and the schedule?
Correct. So yes, this is not intended to be a revenue source for the city other than simply recovering staff costs.
Not saying it is, saying it should be recovery for staff time, right?
Right.
So it's how we're organized and structured, and are we getting recovery for that?
Yeah.
There's also value, too, in the level of fee to deter folks. If your variances are $15, everybody's going to apply for a variance. But if a variance is $1,800, just to start like it is in Oklahoma City, you consider your position a little bit more. So I think we should at least weigh that. How, you know, how hard are we going to stand on our rules, and then how easy do we make it for them to apply for that? Not that we want to make it difficult, but at least worth your while, if you will.
Right. Then it could add cost on top of that, Jared, right? Because if it's $15 and everybody's filing, now I need more staff to handle $15 filings, and it snowballs on us quickly.
And I ask one thing on Commissioner Inmark's point about covering staff time. We need to cover the staff that we... Not the staff we have, but the staff we need. And if the Economic Development Office needs another staff, then we need to make sure that we're covering that. It sounds like a reasonable use for city fees.
Yes, we do consider staff and needed staff when we're looking at fees, too, as well. So, and we do take your concerns, and we'll take your concerns as we go forward and look at those issues and what it costs us truly to do something.
How often a year do you get to... Most cities have a time every year that say, "Hey, we have this. This is our staff, and this is what we need." Is that by a once-a-year review in Yukon?
Usually, we do a once-a-year, but also we look at the five-year trend and where we're at and what we need to do. So we try to do five-year projections, so.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Mitchell. So as we move into the code structure, I think you all have been provided Articles 1 through 4. We have also completed Articles 7 through 9, which we're working through some final red lines with staff before those are provided. And then by mid-January, we will have 5 and 6 completed, and we'll get to this later, but we'll be coming back before you to review those as well. 5 and 6 are kind of the thickest, densest chapters as it's parking, landscaping, signage, all of that. So before we jump into the code, there is... There was a recent bill that was signed by the governor that restricts cities from applying design criteria to single-family homes. So through this process, which is slightly different than our process with the comprehensive plan, we had heard through our survey for the comp plan that people would like to see higher architectural regulations placed on single-family homes and duplexes and commercial buildings. What this bill prevented was a city from applying any architectural design standards for a base zoning district to single-family. So what we're working through is adding design criteria to duplexes and more to commercial districts, but for single-family homes, we could not say that they have to be 70% brick. We could do that through a PUD. We can do that through an overlay. We cannot do it straight in R1. And that was a bill that was signed by the governor.
And 21. Go ahead and make that...
Yes, 2021.
Yeah.
A couple of questions I have, though. It seems like there's some exemptions, and from what it sounds like, there's a PUD in there, and then it said, "Item D," it sounds like from that, if there's already an ordinance applying to that property... I'm just kind of having a hard time figuring out as far as what's existing, or let's say for whatever reason, we had something that had to do with tornado safety or something like that. I think that's exempted in this. And I'm looking at Items D and F.
So I would have to seek clarification on D, but for F, that would be, you know, those overlays that we're talking about and what we're proposing, which would be kind of the central business district, the historic area, a TIF overlay, things like that, we can still put additional requirements on.
But not minimum square footage?
No.
To any extent. It could be literally 10 by 10.
Well, I think there are building code requirements, which would be separate from zoning requirements. Mitchell, would you agree with that? That there are still living space requirements in building codes?
That is correct, but remember, if it has a current restrictive covenant, that covenant may dictate, too.
Right.
That is above this and beyond this, because anybody buys into it agrees by and signs the restrictive covenants when they close on the property.
Well, and the other question I have, it says, it's Item A. It says, "Beginning on or after the effective date of this act, the municipality, city, or town shall not adopt or impose new single-family residential building design elements." So from the... Essentially, everything in the past is grandfathered. Is that... Am I correct? Because just the word "new" means something that doesn't exist at this point.
Most of our requirements for finishes on structures are through a PUD or restrictive covenants that deals with those. So they're typically already covered in the past. Now, when you get an older part of town, then that's a different deal.
Right.
So somebody buys blank land, say it's still Zone A, and wants to build single-family Do we not have a current brick percentage? Or is it just PUD by PUD?
PUD by PUD is how we control some of that. And that's the way we like to do it, because any of the new subdivisions typically are asking for something from us anyway, like a reduction in lot coverage, or reduction in setbacks, or some other items. So those are easier to deal with with a PUD.
Okay.
And we're going to talk about a SPOD, too, later on, as we go forward. That would be a one-lot-type deal.
Okay.
Right, and so to piggyback on that, the process and the ability that you all have now through the PUD process is not changing. So it's likely, just based on what we've seen, most new applications for rezoning are coming in as a PUD. So the regulations for architecture requirements can still be placed within that. What it would prevent us to do from... Would be to put any restrictions on any existing R1 single-family zoning. And so if that piece of farmland that you mentioned came in as a straight, single-family zoning application, you would not be able to put any restrictions on it.
So that would be... That would be the way a builder would go, right? Why would they do a PUD if they could just go R1 and build whatever?
Well, as Mitchell just mentioned, if they're seeking lot coverage or lot size variances, essentially, that's what would force them more into the PUD.
Okay.
But it was important to note that this did not... In our interpretation, our reading, it does not apply to duplex multifamily or commercial So then we'll move into Article 1. We don't have much on this one. You have that chapter, so if you have any questions, Kelly and I will do our best to answer those. Article 1 is a fairly administrative type of chapter. It's talking about the code and the jurisdiction of the code and the purpose of the code. So I don't know if you had a chance to read that, if you have any questions on it, but there's not much in there that is really changing from the previous code. Article 2, we're looking at the definitions of the code. So in this code, if you have a question about what does lot coverage mean, this is the section where you go back and refer to it. And as we move through this, if uses change, or we get other feedback from you or City Council or staff, some of these definitions may change slightly. So Article 3 is District and Uses. This is where we start getting into kind of the real meat of the code. This is identifying the zoning map and its boundaries. It has the permitted use tables, describes the uses, design requirements, establishes standards for accessory uses and structures, defines the temporary uses, and outlines the standards, conditional uses, and special permit uses. So this one, we're going to go through a little bit in more detail, given there's more information. So one of the things that we've seeked to do are collapse and modernize the uses. In the current code, there are... Kelly might remember the exact number, but hundreds?
Yeah.
Hundreds of uses. That would be a bookstore, a bicycle store. In most codes that are being written today, it's seeking to collapse those into more of one retail use of a similar size and type. We've established use... Conditional use standards, which would be reviewed by staff, versus a special permit standard, which will go back through the whole zoning process. And then we've established accessory structures and uses in certain districts. There are temporary uses, such as a farmer's market or a sidewalk sale. And then commercial development standards, which were in Chapter 204 of the code, are now going to be in this chapter. So we're bringing them from a different section of the code into the zoning code. And so in looking at it as a whole, what we're looking at are changing the names of commercial districts. So the new commercial office district was C1. Commercial neighborhood was C2. The commercial general was C3, and a portion of C4. And then commercial highway was your C5 and C6. So with a lot of the most intense uses remaining as special permit that still has to come back through, it made sense to combine the C5 and C6. The other thing with the commercial districts that you'll see is they're somewhat inclusive of the previous one. So if you have neighborhood commercial, it includes some of those more intense uses, but it also includes those less intense uses that you would see in C1. So neighborhood commercial includes new uses, but also commercial office. And there's a use table that you should have been provided within this district that kind of... We'll walk through that and show you what's permitted, what's special permit, and what's conditional. And then we've created some special-purpose districts. So we're moving the central business from commercial to this classification, and then the office research is a new district that's more intended for... In the comp plan, what was that purple employment district? So this might allow for that mixed-use kind of building with retail on the bottom, office on top. I think it's important to note that that district will not exist anywhere in Yukon. So someone would have to specifically come in and request it. So with this and some others on the next page, there are no existing zoning categories that would get converted to some of these. So we're adding rural residential. Right now, there's not a one-acre type of lot size in the code. So if someone sought to come in for more of a rural type of neighborhood, that would be a zoning district that they could seek, but nothing in the community would absorb that zoning with the new code.
So rural residential, is this designed to have easier restrictions on outbuildings?
Not necessarily. It was trying to find a... That lot size in between an urban 6,000, 7,000-square-foot lot and a 5-acre tract. So for this zoning category, it may be in a part of Yukon that will likely never see water and never see sewer, but could be, you know, a development of 50 acres. So, you know, a development could come in with 40 lots in a part of town that will not have services. That's what that is intended for.
So one acre is... So you go with your 50-acre example. Is the engineering such that 50 septic tanks on 50 acres is acceptable?
Those are reviewed by the Department of Environmental Quality. Right now, the minimum standard is if you have a well and private sewer, it's 3/4 of an acre. So we've set that a half-acre larger than the ODEQ requirements.
Okay. Seems small, is what I thought.
If public water was available and they were using private sewer, they would be allowed to go down to half-acre. So we have doubled that requirement in this code.
Is this specific area... I'm imagining that this would be valuable for some of those further-out floodplains, the 100-year floodplain, you know, that's just a little bit farther from the river and some of the, you know, the northern side of town. Was that a thought of where, you know, these zones could be considered?
That's correct. There is not much developable land left. If you recall, when we went through the comp plan, south of the river, there is not much left that is developable. We even looked at if some fill was to occur in the 100-year on the south side of the river. Could it be developable? But it would take a significant amount of fill to make those developable for a neighborhood. So...
It would be a project like the northeast corner of 66 and Kilpatrick. 10 acres of fill.
Right. And so this is likely more envisioned on the far northern side of Yukon. We felt like there had to be something out there if some... Someone did come in and seek approval, because right now, they would have to come in and ask for an urban lot size, which I think everyone would agree is not appropriate out there. So if you have thoughts or comments on, you know, that one acre, if you think it should be 1 and 1/4, you know, happy to entertain those and go back and talk with staff about that.
Well, where did the one acre come from?
In the comprehensive plan, we called the rural section to have a minimum lot size of not less than one acre, for the purpose that you were talking about for the well and the private sewer system. We did not want people to come in thinking that simply because they met the minimum ODEQ requirement, that that would be an appropriate lot size. And so to move on, we've added a manufactured home district. This will not be anywhere within Yukon today. It would, again, would have to be something that someone sought. The reason we've added this is because if we don't allow it in its own zoning district, it would allow mobile homes in other residential districts. So it's allowing for a place within the code, but a special district. So in the zoning code, we cannot come out and say that you are not allowed to build a mobile home. So we have to provide a place for it, and that is why we included this district. It also allows us to create standards for driveway widths, for parking requirements, and the other things associated with a manufactured home park. If you think about it, what's... One of the things that makes it different from a traditional neighborhood is they don't have city streets. They typically... It's a system of private drive, similar to an apartment project.
So are they considered single-family homes?
In this, they would be considered a manufactured home, so.
And two pages ago, where we can't set design standards, are they considered single-family homes for that purpose?
Yes. The federal government considers them single-family homes.
So we cannot set design standards for mobile homes?
Right.
Okay.
Other than what HUD sets.
But that's not the home. That's just the driveways and the home itself. You can't...
Right.
...set size or design standards for it. Okay. And what is the case law? I mean, there must be some onerous case law that came down.
For mobile homes?
Yeah.
I would think the majority of it falls under Fair Housing Act, of making sure that someone seeking a particular type of housing, it would be permitted within a community, that you can't zone your community out of it.
So when people bring that up, I think there is a thought, what I think is a myth, that our percentage of multifamily homes is below the norm, and I don't believe that to be correct. Can you get any... Because maybe if you only drove down two or three streets of Yukon your whole life, but if you drive around Yukon, it seems to me that there's an awful lot of multifamily, or maybe I just...
It'd be interesting to know what a, you know, a good percentage is per capita, if you will. Like how many spots per, you know, for our 25,000 citizens or whatnot. It would be interesting to know, probably comparing to the best.
Yeah. It, you know, does it have an impact on the city? No, but I always remember that there's this guy called the school superintendent, and every time we build something high-density, it's his burden to bear for life. So I just... That's just a question I think we need to get handled, because people do say that from the podium. You know, you're just... Yukon's just against multifamily. I think if we actually counted the units and the size of the town, that that would be far from the truth.
Well, I think the standards are in place, too, to have a healthy community, and I don't think any of us would want us to not be in a healthy community. And I think to that point, we just don't know what the standard is. So, you know, and you can throw out arbitrary numbers that you need, you know, 4%, you know, amount of multifamily residents per 25,000 people, you know, and that's just a good number to have. And I don't know who dictates that, but that would be nice to know where we set and what would be a healthy level for us, so then all decisions that are made moving forward, we're not just calling out the comprehensive plan when it's like, "But wait, we're actually like 2.5% of the 3% of multifamily homes that we actually need." So...
We just have nothing to say. When people standing where you're standing say that, we just have to go, "We don't know." And that's never a good place to be.
Because we want it to be healthy. We want healthy growth in this town and the ability for people to, of all income levels, to live here, so. And that's good for business, too, right? Just to spread out the employees. I mean, we can talk about that all day long, but...
So we can look into that. I know that we can provide an analysis of how much land in Yukon, and we actually have a little bit of this later for the R2 zoning district, of how much land within Yukon. And really, we're pulling it back and saying urbanized Yukon. It's a little misleading to say land in Yukon when 50% of the land is floodplain. So we're really looking at that area south of the river. But we can look at that for the multifamily zoning and see if we can find any research that talks to what that healthy mix is. So the next one is that office research district. Again, this is creating a zoning category that will exist in the code but not exist on the map. So it's an option for someone to zone into in the future, but when you adopt a new map of the first part of next year, that zoning category will not be anywhere on the map because no one currently has that zoning.
How difficult would it be to implement a district inside current zoning? Say, 2023, somebody wants to build a high-tech park on Main Street.
So if they cannot fit within their current zoning, what you'd likely see is a PUD, but that base zoning would, you know, we would hope they would use the office research district.
Okay. So we would have to rezone to that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And then Mitchell mentioned it earlier. We're looking at adding the, what's a simplified planned unit development. Really, the difference between this and... Really, the, the difference between this and a PUD is we would allow people to come in with a spud if their property is less than five acres. Again, I, I think it goes back to giving the city more control over some of those design criteria that you don't have today if the property is too small. So if someone comes in and wants to build a, you know, I don't want to pick a individual user, but we'll say a fast food restaurant, and they don't have the zoning today, and the lot was only two acres, previously, they couldn't do a PUD. They were forced into fitting into one of your zoning categories. Now there's that option of doing a spud, which allows you to put, you know, requirements like stacking distance for, you know, if it's one of those coffee shops that stacking out onto the street in the morning. And then when we get to overlays, we're looking at the TIF areas. So the map on the left, the blue is TIF area one, and that orange is TIF area two. Those will be contained within overlays that have a little bit more flexibility than current commercial districts. But with that flexibility comes more regulations for design. With the understanding that, you know, this is the part of Yukon that we, we expect to see the heaviest type of commercial to drive those sales tax dollars. And that, that may also mean multifamily may be appropriate here, but with that, there are higher regulations on this property. On the right is the area, that's the urban core. This is outlined in the, the comprehensive plan. In this area, we'll be putting some architectural regulations on, on the development. And that includes single family homes because it will be contained within an overlay. So what that may look like is seeking, and we have this proposed in here, front porches may have to be a certain percentage of your frontage. Garages have to be put a certain, I think it's 15 feet behind the front wall of the house. It's to prevent those, those homes from coming in that are all garage on the front. Because in this area, we want to keep it within the context and the character that's existing. And then we'll also have regulations for the central business district, which falls within the core.
You mentioned higher regulations for the I-40 district. Do you mean different regulations or is it when higher? Like when you say higher, I'm, I'm automatically thinking this is going to be difficult for people to move into.
No, not necessarily. So it may mean a higher quality of material that may be on it. We are not seeking to put them through an extra process or anything like that. It, it may mean additional landscaping or screening along neighborhoods. So, does it have a laser pointer on it? That doesn't work on the TV. So if we look at TIF area two, that orange along Frisco Road, it backs up to a neighborhood. So in order for them to get maybe some of that increased height, they have to put up certain buffers and screening along those neighborhoods that doesn't exist in the code today. So it's not that it would make it harder, it's just that we're seeking to protect the views of, from the street, to enhance that landscape and that streetscape, but then also protect the neighbors, because we know they're there and we know that they need a certain level of buffering and screening from a hotel, a Walmart, whatever the, whatever the use may be. Fair enough. And it's our belief, we are not putting any additional requirement on them that would not have been applied through, through a PUD process or through most other cities' regulations.
Just making it standard for this district, which is, yeah, I think that's the goal, right? Make it more consistent across property to property, if you will. At least as a base, you know, zoning.
Yeah. And, and we have represented developers on the other side of planning that we do. And I think one of the, the key things is when you put these in the code from day one, if a, a new to market retailer comes in, they know exactly what the expectation is. There is no, the, the clarity is in the code, they're not having to go through a process to go, is it trees on 15 foot centers or trees on 50 foot centers? And it's up to whoever's standing at this podium to negotiate you down. We want a fair set of standards for both the city and the developer. So I mentioned earlier, those collapsed uses, so apparel stores, arts and crafts store, a bike store. These will all fall within a category called retail minor. And what that is, is it sets a maximum square footage on retail. So what this prevents is a, a Best Buy from coming into a low level commercial district. So while we allow retail, it may be the C1, you would have to have a more intense commercial to have that level of intense retail. And part of it, and why we did the square footage, is because they generate more trips and more traffic. So there's not a lot of C1 in Yukon. Most of it is C2, C3, and higher. But where it is located, it wouldn't be appropriate for someone to come in with a 25,000 square foot Barnes and Noble. But if you have a small bookstore, a small operator, that's in 5,000 square feet, it would likely be appropriate on a, on a smaller, less intense street. So this is the intent, we think this also makes it a little bit easier for you in the future to administer. If, if you think about uses today, you know, I don't think 10 years ago, we would have thought of axe throwing as a, as a use.
Or dispensaries.
Or dispensaries. I'm sure there are, I mean, even breweries to a certain extent. This kind, this gives staff the ability to, and the planning commission, city council, as those new uses come up, to figure out where they need to go in without having to specifically add a new line item for you to negotiate on a PUD process. And then conditional and special permits, we have set conditions in the code and staff will review. So I think today, what you call a conditional permit will now be a special use permit. So the conditions, if you're seeking a use, there are conditions in the code that if you meet, you're under the square footage, you have the setback, you meet, you know, these five regulations, you're permitted. The special use is back through the zoning process. So if you are seeking, and I think we have these outlined, a sexually oriented business, that stays a special use, that goes back through the whole process. And then so the, let's see. Yeah, so for special permit, it's, it's planning commission, city council will determine its conformance of the comp plan, that the use will not adversely affect neighboring property owners, the traffic will not be a problem, that adequate infrastructure is in place, and then they have the appropriate amount of access. And then through that, the city council, it can impose additional specific conditions on the special use permit. And so in modernizing uses, the first one is something I know, I know there's, there's going to want to be discussion on. Accessory dwelling units, we've added it in the code by right. What we are looking at at this point is it would be allowed in the agricultural district, which would be a minimum five acre lot. And then it would be a conditional use in the R2 and R3 zoning. And one of those conditions would be it has to have an alley or be on a corner lot. It has to provide the right number of parking spaces. It has to be setback in a certain way. And then it would be a conditional use in that urban core overlay. Bed and breakfast would be allowed by right in a couple of the commercial zoning districts. And the bed and breakfast is that small scale kind of converted house. But then someone could apply for a special permit if they have the R1 or R2 zoning or agricultural. And that would come fully back through the process if someone sought to do that.
So why, why are we specifically putting R1 in, under the bed and breakfast heading there? Why, why are we going out of our way to, to say that, that this is a possibility?
I think if you think about bed and breakfast, they typically tend to be in a neighborhood like that. It's, it's typically a large converted house that's turned into a bed and breakfast.
Right. Okay.
So this is not permitting it in any zoning district. What it would allow is if you, typically you'll see it in older parts of town that are zoned R1, someone has a large house, they want to convert it into a bed and breakfast. Rather than having to change the whole zoning and make it a more intense commercial use, potentially in a sea of single family, you're, you're saying you can stay single family and we're allowing you to operate this use, you know, for however many years they're seeking the approval for.
So a bed and breakfast in the sense that we used to think about it would be that, and then a VRBO would be a short term rental?
That's correct.
Okay, that's the, that's where we're sitting, okay. And VRBOs would be allowed in R1?
Only with a special permit. So currently, and Mitchell may correct me if I misspeak here, but currently there is no standard or regulation. So someone could open up a, an Airbnb and no one approves it. It's similar to Edmund, that they happen, they occur, and the city has no oversight. What we have provided for is if someone wants to do that, they have to come before this body and the city council to get it approved.
And with these special permits, are there specific conditions per permit, for example?
Yes.
So like, well, we'll use the Airbnb. It's the same set of rules once we adopt a new code that we will hear this year, but the next planning commission in 10 years is going to hear the same set of rules, essentially. That's the idea, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And then some of the other ones, you know, building mounted antennas, dwelling units above the ground floor, that's really your central business district area, and the areas along I-40, if someone sought to do that. Dwelling units with zero lot lines, that would be a conditional use in that I-40 overlay. Micro food and beverage production in I-1, that would be your brewery if someone sought to open one, they have to have an industrial zoning. And there is not a lot of that in Yukon currently. Office warehouse, this is a relatively new use. We've worked on a handful of these projects, I think, and I'll partially blame the marijuana industry. That industry has been swallowing up most of industrial space in, in the metro. And so what some developers have sought, if you think about a, a row of personal storage units, except storefronts, there may be 500 square feet to 1,200 square feet that are geared toward the electrician, the plumber, all of these small industrial users that used to have space that have now been pushed out because of it. So it's this hybrid use that's not really industrial, it's more office in nature, but because of the use, the users, those also tend to be industrial uses. So we've.
Would you like to know where those people are going, they're being pushed out? They're running their industrial businesses out of storage units by the hundreds. And so it's not a, a good thing for any municipality.
Right. And that's clearly not the intent of a personal storage unit.
No, but that is, I mean, go through any one of them at 10, 11 in the morning and see how many businesses are being run out of them.
I think there's a, there's a really good example of this at, in the north side of Oklahoma City at Portland and 164th. It's called Port 164. It's kind of pushed back off the highway, but it's kind of these, there's a door and a garage door. Within it, there may be one or two offices, but they're able to pull their work truck in. So in the morning, they may show up with their car, swap it out for their work vehicle, and head out for the day. Ideally, you have a space for that, and they're not operating in personal storage units or out of their home.
And that's a great idea. That's, you know, doing, doing it ahead of time, planning it correctly.
Those, those type of developments are popping up other places as well.
Yeah, we've, we worked on one in Mustang, and, you know, it, it can be a struggle to get a PUD like that approved, because it's such a foreign concept, and most zoning codes don't allow for it. So you're having to, to say, we're going to allow all these types of industrial uses, because that's typically where the plumber, the electrician, where those uses fall. But you're having to put all these extra restrictions on it about, well, it can only operate during these hours, can, you know, can't, you can't live in the unit, you can't have these. So we felt in doing this way, we're kind of setting Yukon to be ahead of the curve in that regard. So when you get one, you at least have a basis to negotiate off of. It'll likely still need to be in a PUD. We think most of the zoning that Yukon's going to see into the future is likely going to be in that PUD or SPOD anyway. So accessory uses, this could be, you know, in your current code, mechanical equipment, your trash cans, swimming pools. I think there was a church recently that did a food pantry. We've even included, you see these in neighborhoods, the Little Free Library, if you've seen that, like in HOA will put up, you know, a little, a little station and kids in the neighborhood can swap out books. We're allowing for things like that here, and they'll have their, their conditions on them. And then those temporary uses I talked about earlier, the farmer's market, sidewalk sales, and then the subdivision, sales office. We went back and forth with, with staff quite a bit. It is likely that Yukon will see another large scale, single family home development, because there is just not the land to do it. There, there's very little land left to accommodate that sort of use. You'll see it if you go to the far west side of town, along the railroad tracks, some of that is this mix of light industrial and agricultural uses. And then there are small tracks and pieces, but there is not a lot left. And so, single family home neighborhood, you may see more of that rural residential if you continue to see it. So these are the special permit uses. Agricultural animal processing, hog raising, which is in the code today. If anyone is curious, hog raising is only a special permit in I-2. And I think there's only one I-2 property in all of Yukon. And if I had the map, it's far west side of town, it's a piece on the south side, that's kind of the extra addition into Yukon, if you will. An airport, salvage yards, bed and breakfast, correctional facilities, crematoriums, helipad, mining and processing, recycling centers, scrap operations, sexual oriented businesses, shooting range, and solid waste disposal. So, you know, a lot of these, like a, an airport, we don't know if Yukon will, will ever get an airport, but we need to make sure that the use is in the code if someone ever did come and request it from you.
Under the mining is, does it, is that where the dirt farms would go?
Yes.
Is that mining, technically? Okay.
Remember, these are only recommendations that they're recommending, so if we've got an issue with something, we need to go ahead and discuss it now or next month.
It's just that, you think of the things that end up, you know, we, we hear it two or three times, it keeps coming back to us. Dirt farms is one of them. And then things that create traffic. Now, when you said dwelling above business, is that kind of what we had in mind out there? I call it the Louisiana project.
Yes.
Where you could live above.
That's right.
That kind of idea. That, that's, that's very popular in a lot of places.
It is. And so what's slightly different than, if you recall, in the adoption process of the SMART code, we are not seeking to apply that in a requirement type of way. It's here if someone seeks to do it through a PUD, they can add those uses and have that conversation with you all.
So could it be building by building?
Yes.
Because there are some buildings on Main Street that are multi-story, but the second story hasn't been used for.
Right. So that, that type of use would allow one of those buildings to have someone live above it.
Okay.
But yes, to Mitchell's point, if there are other uses or the conditional uses, if you review those and you, you think, I'd really like that to be a special permit, you know, that's the feedback that we're after. So as you're going through, or I know you all have Mitchell's contact, but our contact information's at the end, if you have other comments or questions as you move through it. If you think of anything after you leave here tonight, this is far from a final document that's being approved. We're here to get that feedback, so we can.
Well, I mean, I, what I want is, is solid ground to stand on. I, I don't, I, you know, one of the things is, a person with eyes open buys C3 property. Is there a way for the city to provide a document at closing? You are buying C3 property, and we expect it to be used for C3 property. You know, buying C3 property with absolutely no intention of even building C doesn't make our job doable, really. We, we might as well just rubber stamp and fire it through. So just, you know, what, when you come to things that, you know, you, you work with other municipalities, things that have given the planning commission a firmer base to stand on, not for, to be onerous, but to just apply it the same in every case.
It's nice to take feeling out of a decision.
Give me a traffic count, give me a square footage, give, you know, give me a traffic study, and, 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 you know, and apply the data instead of pitting a neighborhood against the new development.
Yeah, I mean, so those are the types of things that we can look at. Yeah, I mean, so those are the types of things that we can look at, particularly in the PUD process, is whether or not you want a traffic study submitted with every PUD, or a PUD over a certain acreage, or lot size, or commercial square footage. I think where we're going is, you know, elevations will have to be submitted with a PUD, and so those are the types of things that we want to make it easier for you to make those decisions. So if you ever come across anything during this process that you think it'd be really nice for you to have, particularly within a PUD, because we're a little bit more flexible in there, we can certainly have that discussion about including them. And we'll use Edmund as an example. Edmund's PUD process requires a traffic study, requires building elevations, and then in their PUD process, there is that expectation that if it differs significantly from its intensity and its design, that you can't build it, that you have to come back through the process if you sought to amend it. So those are the types of things that I think we can definitely discuss.
You know, the things that are in the documents, I mean, our document allows me to hire outside counsel and private engineers. We don't. We understand city budgets, so we don't do that. So, you know, I'm kind of more thinking of the things that people come here and they know what to expect, so...
But it seems less arbitrary.
Yeah.
Because I think a lot of people approach us as, you're just doing this arbitrarily.
Yeah.
And we don't really have a...
If we turn it down, we're arbitrary, and then if we approve it, then the existing neighborhood says we're arbitrary, whereas, you know, it's never going to be perfect. But if there were some, you know, a data-driven decisions, I think is where jury was going, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I want to tag on to that. You talk about, like, requirements for PUDs, spuds, et cetera. One issue that I've had with things that have come before us is the lack of information, right? They want to take a snapshot of what they're, what's going on on their little square, but what I think would be beneficial for all of us is to understand the lay of the land, even though we all live here, but to understand site plans from all four corners of the property that we're making a decision on. So, across the street, to the east, to the west, to the north, to the south, whatever's applicable for that, to have some, just the documentation of the site plans, and to understand more of the lay of the land, I think would be very beneficial for us to make the decisions, if it is in fact arbitrary and we're deciding what we want to do.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move into Article 4. These are the envelope standards and the bulk standards, so this is where we'll talk about setbacks, building height, lot coverage, lot minimums, and lot width. We want to point out the R2 district, because we are proposing a fairly, I think, progressive R2 district, to allow for some things that we think would be good for the city of Yukon, particularly that core of Yukon. So we're seeking to reduce the minimum lot size and the building coverage and the setbacks, but through our new zoning map, we will see a significant reduction in R2 zoning that's currently in Yukon. So if you look at those blue highlights on the map, those are all zoned R2, but they're all zoned, they're all developed as single-family residential. So what you'll see through a new zoning map is we'll be downzoning, assuming it's approved and after the notice and the public hearings, those districts will all become R1. So they're existing single-family neighborhoods, they likely received R2 zoning for lot sizes or setback reasons, or they intended to build duplexes and they built single-family. So if you look at the third bullet, we're proposing to change those to what's actually on the ground, and the R2 represents 12% of all of the urbanized Yukon, but about, conservatively, 95%, Kelly? Is going to become R1. And then there's only 2% of Yukon that is R3, and a bulk of that is going to be in and around that overlay of the central business district. And so R3 is going to become the multifamily development. So if you want to build an apartment complex, a garden-style, a senior living center, you're going to seek R3 zoning. R2 zoning will remain for duplexes, and it'll allow up to a fourplex. The reason we're doing that is because that is a type of development that you're seeing in and around Main Streets. So allowing slightly higher density, if it meets those standards and requirements, which we now have an overlay that we can control architectural requirements, so what we won't see in that overlay, in that R2, is 40 feet of garage door and 40 feet of paving, and no front doors. So what we are going to do in that is require your front door be ahead of your garage, that it has a front porch, that the driveway at the street, you know, may only be 20 feet or 15 feet, and then it flares out as it goes onto your property. So what we're trying to do is allow for what we believe, what we believe we've heard, is for that more gentle density, but with the right type of architectural guidelines, regulations, and site plans. It seems like, what I feel I've heard through this process and through the comp plan is, you don't feel you're getting the level of quality of the R2 or higher-density developments that you've seen in other places. So that's what we're after with R2, but we specifically put the slide in here, because we figured it'd be a talking point.
So the little, I call them orphan R2 dots, there was one behind Bounce Academy that was a little R2, I mean, it was, you could almost not see it. Are we...
We are looking at anything that's not as zoned appropriate, that a single-family is zoned R2, or if it's a single-family is zoned R3, we'll look at those and correct those as we go forward with a proper notice to those property owners.
Okay.
But they can't build a duplex anyway, and they can't build apartments on their lot anyway, because lot size doesn't meet the requirements anyway, so we're not taking anything away from it.
So when we rezone, like, the senior housing, newer, that's behind, everybody says behind the Taco Bell?
Yeah.
Very nice one back there. Do we just rezone the footprint we need for that, or did we rezone that whole area?
The lot that that serves, so the footprint basically was zoned R3 with a PUD overlay on that one.
So the rest is still A?
It's still whatever it was zoned, so there's a little commercial, there's a little A in there.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And, you know, with a lot of these neighborhoods, if, you know, as we work through the public hearing process, what you're essentially going to be presented is a rezoning application, but it's going to be a map approval application, that we'll be seeking approval of a zoning map for you to recommend approval to, to the city council. So assuming that was to be adopted, you would see roughly a 10% decrease in the amount of R2 land currently on the ground in Yukon. The reason we feel comfortable doing this is we don't believe anyone's rights are being taken away, because they're in newer neighborhoods that likely have CCNRs that would not allow them to be a duplex anyway. There will be small portions, and, you know, there's like one cul-de-sac that might have some duplexes on it, the PUDs will remain in place, but the straight R2 zoning, for the most part, will kind of go by the wayside. And then we get into the non-residential districts, and so we've established minimum lot sizes for industrial areas. Your current code didn't have any, so in theory, someone could come in and ask for zoning on a 5,000-square-foot lot for industrial. We felt like that probably wasn't appropriate. Those uses tend to be more intense and probably need more land area to accommodate them.
So when, we had a case not that long ago, where it was an industrial area, and it was planted for two buildings, and they wanted to build six. Would this be of any assistance in, you know, slowing those kind of things down?
Not necessarily adding more buildings on a lot, but it would prevent someone from getting industrial zoning if they didn't meet the minimum lot size, which previously there was none. So if in that case, they sought a rezoning application, and they had a 6,000-square-foot lot, now I think I-1 is...
10?
Kelly will check it, but it now has a minimum standard that someone has to meet.
Okay. You remember the case I'm talking about?
Yeah.
12,000 square feet. So it's essentially doing that, in that it's an entirely appropriate requirement to place on a use that you know is going to have more of an impact on surrounding neighbors.
Well, it just calls into questions, why did we plant something to begin with? We planted it in two lots for a reason, and then there wasn't a reason. So there are six buildings on two plots, it's just kind of a, anything you could do in that area has to make up.
I'm making a note, too. And then we've allowed for a little bit of a shallower setback in the CO district, only if parking is in the rear. So this was an attempt that if somebody wants to do more landscaping, wants to have a nicer entrance, and they're willing to put their parking behind the building, if you consider it a carrot and a stick, you're giving us a nicer building and a nicer frontage along a commercial district, you put the parking behind, we'll let you get a little bit more space back on the front. Changes to the commercial district minimum lot sizes to reflect the built environment and align with district categories and uses. We looked at each commercial district, and basically how large each of those parcels were, just to make sure that whatever we're changing, we're not putting someone in nonconformance. We don't want to have anyone be in nonconforming use, and so we didn't want to set a standard of 20,000 square feet in existing zoning, most of them are 10. So we looked at that and confirmed. And then this is kind of with the TIF district. We allow for taller buildings in the intensive commercial districts if they're more than 150 feet away from residential. So currently, we didn't have any sort of control that if you are neighboring single-family residential, how tall you could be and how you want to step away from that. So if you have additional thoughts on that, or the 150-foot requirement, please share those with us. And then the commercial business district, the front setbacks, what we're allowing for here is, you know, if a building was, if a building burned down, or you have a vacant tooth kind of in that street wall, that when someone comes back, they have to build within five feet of the existing established setback line. So we'll look at a block, and if the existing setback was 10 feet, they can go down to five, or they can go back to 15, but it prevents someone from being way out of character scale in that district. And then a little bit more information on that urban core overlay. We're establishing minimum lot size area width and coverage based on the existing development pattern and historic plats. So a lot of this area was actually platted as 25-foot-wide lots. Most of it was purchases, too, that's fairly common. But there are some one-off area, one-off lots that are still fairly small. The setbacks, what I just talked about, that front yard, you have to match the prevailing setback within five feet. That prevents someone from buying half a block and saying, I'm going to build an 8,000-square-foot house, and I'll pull it all the way back. What we want in this area is to keep it walkable, to keep it consistent with the historic pattern. And then side and rear yard reduced to encourage redevelopment and infill, and match the existing development patterns. We're including garage standards. Front-facing garages have to be at least 15 feet behind the primary facade of the building. So that prevents, I think in the planning world, it would be called a snout house, it's that house where the main architectural feature is the garage. Particularly in the older urban areas, that is not consistent with the patterns. What we're seeking is, it can be attached, it could be detached, but your front door and your front porch has to be that prominent architectural feature. And then the porch requirements, new houses have to have a porch or stoop at least a quarter length of the facade, so if you've got a house that's 20 feet wide at its front, you have to have at least a five-foot wide porch. And then the depth of the porch should not be less than four feet, that's a requirement to make sure that porch is usable. If you look across the country, when requirements get put on this, there's always people that find a way to, you know, ruin the intent, and so what you'll, what you may see is almost a Juliet railing attached to the front, but no actual usable porch, so we're just trying to clarify some of those things. And the porch or stoop should face the street. In certain cases, you may do a wraparound porch on the side of a house, or on the front, but we want to make sure that that porch is facing the front. And then the I-40 overlay, there's some increased height allowances for some of those more intense commercial uses. Again, but it includes buffering against the residential. Increased landscaping standards. The landscaping standards, I think what you'll see are going to be enhanced from your current code. That was probably one of the primary things we heard through the comp plan process, was people felt like as they were driving down an arterial street, when they're driving down Garth Brooks, they didn't, they didn't feel like there was enough landscaping, that, you know, the landscaping that may have been put on the site, there weren't enough street trees, and that seeing a lot of parking lots did not necessarily create that sense of high-level design that I think people were hoping for. So with this overlay district, particularly, or specifically, you'll see much higher landscaping regulations, but you'll see increased regulations throughout all of the commercial zoning districts. Building material requirements will be increased to ensure that people are using sturdy, long-lasting materials. Sinage regulations will be slightly different for attached signage, and so we'll use a project, it's called Track 30, it is in Chisholm Creek, there's a new barbecue restaurant out there, it's where Republic used to be. If you, that's a building that was two or three stories tall, it had to specifically allow signage on each floor for each tenant. So if, typically, it'll just say, you've got this much frontage, that's how much signage you get, but it doesn't take into account that mixed-use building. So it gets a little bit more based on it having multiple floors. It may be that you get a little bit taller of a sign if you're next to I-40, or within a certain amount of feet of I-40, but as you fade away from it, your signage regulations would go down. And so that's kind of the quick overview. Next steps, briefly discussed at the beginning. We are wrapping up our final two chapters. We're working with staff on that. We'll be back to you in January or February to review those. But between now and then, if you take the time and think of anything, please share your thoughts now, that the hope, I think the hope on our side of it is always that there is no surprise to you when this comes forward in adoption. So if it means you, you know, a setback, or a lot coverage, or something needs to be a, you know, a special use permit, please let us know. We'll happily take a look at that and work with you to get that done. Obviously, this is the city of Yukon's code, it is not Johnson &amp; Associates' code or anybody else's, so we want to make sure the code is working for you, and what you all see when you receive zoning applications, and you see it get built around the community. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Do we have a definition for barn dominiums in the new code?
What was that term?
Barn dominium.
Oh, I got you.
I don't think that one made the code, but...
It's an issue.
Yes. So, you know, that could be looked at either as a primary structure, or an accessory dwelling unit if it stays under that square footage requirement that will be placed on it.
How does this get approved when you're done with it? What's the process?
So, once we are fully done, we've presented the chapters to you and city council, we've taken any feedback, we'll redline with staff, come back through, create a final document. One of the things in there that you don't see in the code are the graphics, the pictures, and the images. We wait to produce those until we feel we have a soft approval. It'll be packaged up, and then it'll go through introduction, and it'd be similar to a zoning process. So it'll come back to you for a recommendation to city council, where it'll be introduced and then voted on, and when that happens, it will replace the existing zoning code with the zoning map.
Any questions from commissioners? Thank you.
Please read as much as you can, and if you've got questions, let us know, because this is going to be our zoning code going forward for years, so please read it, questions, concerns, whatever, let's talk about them.
Okay.
All right.
Right. Any other business tonight from staff?